I'd like to call this meeting to order. The recognition of members present, all the council is present, as well as many of the department heads and under departments. Thank you very much. I would like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under General, we just wanted to point out some information about the upcoming census this year. On or between March 12th and 20th, you'll receive an invitation to respond to the 2020 Census. March 16th to 24th, a reminder letter will go out. One of the great things about this is you can actually respond to the census online. They've made that an opportunity to do so. And census data also helps with -- real estate developers use the census to build new homes, revitalize neighborhoods. We use the census for public safety and emergency preparedness. And businesses use census data to decide where to build factories, offices, and stores. So this is all good information, so with the ease of the access to reply, we're encouraging everybody to apply to the census. Thank you. Moving on to committee correspondence to council, does anybody have any committee correspondence? Counselor Menthorn.
Yes, last Thursday, Shuttle Bus Zoom, now known as Biddeford-Saco, Old Orchard Beach Transit, had our first Board of Directors meeting of the new year. We had a kind of a four-hour marathon educational meeting to get everyone up to speed on what's going on with transit in southern Maine. And it was a very good meeting, very productive meeting, and it looks like it's going to be a great year for transit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other committee correspondents? Seeing none, moving on to item number six, public comment. I have nobody signed up on the public comment sheet. Is there any member from the public that would like to speak now? Seeing none. Moving on to the approval of minutes, we don't have any approval of minutes, minutes to approve, rather. Moving on, there are no consent items, so we're now moving on to action items. And there is item A, Approval of Habitat for Humanities Request of a Land Donation. Do we have a motion?
On January 6th, Representatives from Habitat for Humanity attended the council meeting to request the donation of the unused portion of a city playground located at 2 Marguerite Road. This land will be used for a Habitat for Humanity home. Staff recommends approving the donation of the land. I move to forward the Approval of Habitat for Humanity Request of a Land Donation to the Planning Board for Review pursuant to Chapter 81 City Property.
Motion passes seven zero to move it to the Planning Board.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Counselor Purdy, seconded by Counselor Johnston. Item 10, New Business Strategic Goal Planning Exercise. Any discussion on the matter? I'm going to turn it over to City Administrator Kainrath. Counselor Copeland.
I'm just curious if we've had a weigh-in from our attorney and our financial people,
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So most of you are quite aware of this process by now, but I'm just going to give some brief background and then turn it over to Denise and Emily, who will be facilitating the process
if there are any repercussions of donating versus selling for a dollar?
City Administrator Kainrath.
this evening. So as you know, earlier this month, Mayor Doyle asked the city council members to submit Yeah, I would just say, City Solicitor Tim Murphy did provide an opinion on this their goals for the next three years. Department heads were also asked to submit their top three to five strategic goals for that was forwarded to council from me via email, if you remember that. the prioritization process. A team of city staff helped organize and filter goals into categories and then create And you had a second part of your question, I think. goal statements that best reflected different goals that were submitted.
If there were any, you know, that was the legal end, was there a financial implication?
So in Exhibit A, which is the three-page document you have at your seats here with the nine subheadings, you'll see the high-level strategic goals that were created from the As far as tax rules?
Right.
submissions received.
I mean, not as, just generally, if there's any difference to the city or?
The bullets below are the goals submitted by counselors that were used to craft each of those goal statements. We've had it in, I think, tax acquire for over 30 years, so it's been zero. And as indicated during those, during the request for goals, after the narrowing and prioritization process, we will end up with no more than nine goals this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
So at the city council meeting tonight, these goals will be entered into the prioritization
Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote.
grid, which is Exhibit B that you see.
Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
And this was first introduced, as you know, by the mayor to Planning and Development Director
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Denise Colvet.
Counselor Menthorn?
Denise facilitated a goal-setting exercise at the Planning Board and Economic Development
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Commission previously. So all the goals identified are important, however, being mindful of limited resources regarding time, staff, and funding, it is essential to prioritize. So please see Exhibit B for more information about the grid, as I just mentioned. So going forward, at our February 3rd city council meeting, we will identify the three overarching focus areas, and we'll adopt the nine goals that were introduced tonight. We can do that, that part this evening. Then at a future meeting in February, the city council will then review the objectives staff recommend to accomplish in the city council's strategic goals. These objectives will be helpful during the budget process to align our strategic goals around the budget process. So, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. So I just want to let the council in that we, during the Economic Development Commission, when I said as the liaison, we went through this process. And at first, I was very skeptic of the process itself, and I just want to encourage you to look beyond the, don't get hung up in the minutia of one word or not liking one word, but look at the overarching goal, and then the objectives underneath, and the strategies of how to achieve the objectives, which achieve the ultimate goal. So just, the process is a good process. It was used by the Economic Development Commission and Planning Board to arrive at some strategic goals for those boards that they've been working to achieve. So that's all I have to say. I'm going to turn it over to the staff team, which is Denise and Emily, and Jack and Ryan. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilors. I'd like to start by thanking all of the department heads for contributing a lengthy document, which we're actually going to compile a report. There was beyond the goals, there were other, you know, departmental needs and strains, other resources that were needed to accomplish what they needed to accomplish that will come later. But they did contribute three to five goals apiece that were part of the goal-setting process that we use as department heads. I'd like to thank the team that pulled all of this together. Emily Roy, City Administrator Brian Kainrath, also Chief Jack Clements, Ryan Sommer, and Howard Carter, who's unable to be here this evening because he's attending a professional development seminar. I'd like to thank them for all of their work, pulling all of the numerous goals together, assembling what the department heads had submitted and the counselors had submitted, and turning this into some goals that you are looking at this evening. Keeping in mind, as we begin this process, the goals are high-level, they're more general, they represent the overall aim of things you want to accomplish. I know some folks, whether it's department heads or counselors, turned in goals as well as objectives. We'll talk about the differences between those two. Not to worry, those objectives will be carried forward underneath those specific goals. So again, the goals that you're looking at are things that we all want to envision as a team. Goal areas we want to accomplish, it represents our purpose, our aim, and what we would like to do. The objectives, on the other hand, which will be the material at a subsequent meeting, and will come from the department heads as well as counselors of what we want to accomplish under each of these goals, those are more specific, they're tangible, they'll come with measurables, metrics, and benchmarks, and that's for a later date, and they will help guide our budget development. So the prioritization grid that you see, as well as the outline, no priority order. They're strictly alpha. So if you take a look when you see enhance, enhance, ensure, evaluate, they're just in alpha order. So they're not geared toward having you go one way or the other for the priorities. The objectives that we listed underneath those are the ones that you submitted, and they're used as a guide. Keep in mind, just simply a guide. And so now, what I'd like you to do is to take a look at your prioritization grid, and obviously, the squares were too large, too small to write the entire statement. So when I read the goals, they're actually summarized by keywords so that it can quickly refresh your thought process as you take a look at them and work with them. And at this point, what we're going to be doing, when we start looking at the grid, I am going to read the first couple of times the entire goal statement for them, so you can kind of have that to register. And then I'll just synthesize that and come with the buzzwords. But you're going to be looking at it very simply, one versus two. It's going to sound like an eye exam for those of you who wear contacts and/or glasses. It'll be one or two, one or three, and it'll be a hand vote, and we're going to tally. If there is a four-four vote on an item, we circle that, we call that a tie, we use it later on when we need to do a tiebreaker. My advice to you folks, as you've had time to look at these, is not to overthink it. But if you have a clarifying question when we get to that particular goal, by all means, feel free to ask. And then at the end of this, Emily and I have looked at them and kind of looked at potentially some focus areas that you would want to be looking at and deciding upon on February 3rd. But this evening, Mayor, I believe you want to vote on the nine goals and the priorities, and so you will be doing that this evening. And then we'll turn that into a focus area and put all of these goals underneath that. So before we dig in, I wanted to see if you had any clarifying questions or anything that you wanted to ask.
Counselor Copeland.
Just a quick question first, that looks like a great procedure. And I know that you, in addition to asking counselors for their goals, does this include the department head goals?
The department head goals that were turned in are not part of the objectives listed underneath, but the goal statements do include all of the information coming from department heads. But the listing underneath is strictly what the counselors had submitted.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Moving on.
All right, so everybody gets a vote, and the mayor, except for Brian. Brian participated in the department head portion. And I have Ryan here and Jack. Jack's going to be helping Emily, making sure she's staying on top of things. And Ryan's here to make sure that I'm tallying it correctly. All right? You're welcome to circle the numbers if you want. So what we're going to start with is, we're going to do it vertically rather than horizontally, so we can actually go a little bit more quickly. So your first goal, and this is also for the public's benefit, is enhance park infrastructure, community services, and opportunities for recreation. That's goal one. Goal two would be to enhance recruitment, retention, professional development strategies to maximize service delivery. So when you vote on this, it's like if you had just those two choices, it's like two shirts to wear, two ties to choose from, which one would you wear that day? And that's the way we're going to look at it. And the numbers, at the end of the day, really show the right outcome. So if you had a choice between park infrastructure, community services, et cetera, or working on employee retention recruitment, which would it be? How many are for one? One, two, three. And how many are for two? One, two, three. Wait a minute, that's six people, so let's see if somebody else is going to vote here. Okay, so how many for goal one? Raise your hands nice and high. So I go, one, two, three, four. How many, five? And how many for goal two? One, two, three. So goal one it is. All right, goal one, again, is the park infrastructure, community services, and opportunities for recreation versus three, which is to ensure an equitable, sustainable tax base that offers diverse residential, commercial opportunities. If you had a choice between the park structure and to the equitable and sustainable tax base, how many are for number one? One. And how many are for number three? Three it is. All right, number one, again, is the enhancing the park's infrastructure, community services, et cetera, versus number four, which is to evaluate city ordinances, policies, and the charter, and update or amend to reflect current and relevant standards. How many would be for number one? One, two, three, four, five, six. And how many for number four? One, two. So one's has it. Again, number one, which is the park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus number five, which is foster interdepartmental collaboration, enhance transparency, and promote citizen engagement. How many for one? One, two, three. And how many for number five? One, two, three, four, five. So five has it. Number, the next one we're comparing is park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus number six, which is to guide and promote best practices in planning, land use, and economic development. How many are for number one? One. And how many are for number six? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. All right. Again, looking at number one, which is park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus number seven, which is to implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability, mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion. How many for number one? Okay, and how many for number seven? Seven has it. All right, next, one versus eight. Again, one is park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus, oops, I got to flip the page here. Invest in technology, infrastructure, resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. How many for number one? And how many for number eight? One, two, three, four, five. Number eight has it. All right, and number one, park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus number nine, support and interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for number one? And how many for number nine? One, two, three, four, five. Number, the next one we're comparing is park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus number six, which is to guide and promote best practices in planning, land use, and economic development. How many are for number one? One. And how many are for number six? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. All right. Again, looking at number one, which is park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus number seven, which is to implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability, mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion. How many for number one? Okay, and how many for number seven? Seven has it. All right, next, one versus eight. Again, one is park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus, oops, I got to flip the page here. Invest in technology, infrastructure, resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. How many for number one? And how many for number eight? One, two, three, four, five. Number eight has it. All right, and number one, park infrastructure, community services, and recreation versus number nine, support an interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for number one? Okay, and how many for number nine? One, two, three, four, five, six. But do you want to wait to vote?
I'll go with one.
One? Okay, so how many ones again? Two? Okay, so nine has it. All right, so now we're going to move to the second column, which is going to be two versus the balance of them. So number two, again, to reread that one, is to enhance recruitment, retention, professional development strategies to maximize service delivery. So number two versus number three, which is to ensure an equitable, sustainable tax base that offers diverse residential, commercial opportunities. How many for number two? How many for number three? Threes have it. Number two, recruitment, retention, professional development versus number four, which is evaluate city ordinances, policies, and the charter, and update or amend to current, to reflect current and relevant standards. Number two? One, two, three, four, five. Number four? One, two. So number two has it, correct? All right. Number two, which is the recruitment, retention, professional development versus number five, which is foster interdepartmental collaboration, enhance transparency, and promote citizen engagement. How many for number two? One, two, three. And how many for number five? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so number five has it. Number two, recruitment, retention, professional development versus number six, guide and promote best practices in planning, land use, and economic development. How many for number two? One. And how many for number six? Six has it. Number two, recruitment, retention, professional development versus number seven, implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability and mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion. How many for number two? And how many for number seven? Seven has it. Number two, recruitment, retention, professional development versus number eight, investing in technology, infrastructure, and resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. How many for number two? And how many for number eight? Eight has it. And the last one here on this column, enhance recruitment, retention, professional development versus number nine, to support interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for number two? How many for number nine? Nine has it. All right, so now we're looking at column three. Again, I'll reread number three, which is to ensure an equitable and sustainable tax base that offers diverse residential, commercial opportunities versus number four, which is evaluate city ordinances, policies, and the charter, and update or amend to reflect current and relevant standards. Number three? One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, number three has it. Okay, number three, equitable and sustainable tax base versus number five, which is foster interdepartmental collaboration, enhance transparency, and promote citizen engagement. How many for three? One, two, three, four, five, six. And how many for number five? Okay, three has it. Three, equitable and sustainable tax base versus number six, which is to guide and promote best practices in planning, land use, and economic development. How many for the equitable and sustainable tax base? Number three? One, two. And how many? One, two, three? Oh, there we go. And how many for number six? One, two, three, four. Okay, so it's four, three. So who's got the fifth one? Somebody didn't vote. Is it, because I want to know if it's a five, three, a four, three, or a four, four?
Ask again. Just ask again.
Okay, I'll ask it again. Number three, equitable and sustainable tax base? One, two, three, four. So this is a tie. And number six? One, two, three, four. It's a tie. We'll come back to that one. Number three, equitable and sustainable tax base versus number seven, implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability and mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion. How many for three? One, two, three, four. And how many for number seven? One, two, three, four. So that's a tie. All right. Next one is number three, equitable and sustainable tax base versus number eight, which is to invest in technology, infrastructure, and resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. How many for the equitable and sustainable tax base? One, two, three, four versus number eight, the technology. One, two, three, four. We're going to have a runoff. All right. Number three, ensuring an equitable and sustainable tax base versus number nine, interconnected, support an interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for number three? One, two, three, four. And how many for number nine? One, two, three, four. Okay, we're going to have a runoff. This, you're making it challenging. It's all good. All right, starting with the fourth column. Evaluate ordinances, policies, and charter, and update or amend to reflect current and relevant standards. Number four versus number five, to foster interdepartmental collaboration, enhance transparency, promote citizen engagement. How many for number four? One, two, three. And how many for number five? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that's five. Four, to evaluate city ordinances, policies, and charter versus number six, to guide and promote best practices in planning, land use, and economic development. How many for number four? How many for number six? Six has it. Okay, number four, to evaluate city ordinances, policies, and the charter versus number seven, which is to implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability and mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion. How many for number four? And how many for number seven? Seven it is. Number four, to evaluate city ordinances, policies, and the charter versus number eight, which is to invest in technology, infrastructure, and resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. How many for number four? One. And how many for number eight? Eight it is. All right, and the last one in that column would be to evaluate city ordinances, policies, and the charter versus number nine, to support an interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for number four? How many for number nine? Nine it is. All right. Next, column five begins with fostering, foster interdepartmental collaboration, enhance transparency, and promote citizen engagement versus number six, which is to guide and promote best practices in planning, land use, and economic development. transparency and promote citizen engagement versus number six, which is to guide and promote best practices in planning, land use and economic development. How many want number five? And how many want number six? All right. Six it is. Foster interdepartmental collaboration, enhance transparency, promote citizen engagement versus number seven, which is to implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability and mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion. How many for number five? How many for number seven? Seven it is. All right. Number five, interdepartmental collaboration, transparency, citizen engagement versus number eight, invest in technology, infrastructure and resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. How many for number five? One, two. And how many for number eight? One, two, three, four, five. Eight it is. Number five, interdepartmental collaboration, transparency, citizen engagement versus number nine, which is to support an interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for number five? One, two?
Column?
No. One. And number nine? Nine it is. All right. So now we're up to column six. Guide and promote best practices in planning, land use and economic development versus implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability and mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion. How many for number six? Three, four, five. And how many for number seven? One, two. Okay. Six it is. Best practices in planning, land use and economic development versus number eight, invest in technology, infrastructure and resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. How many for number six? One, two, three, four, five, six. And how many for number eight? All right. Number six, best practices in planning, land use, economic development versus number nine, to support an interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate growth, community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for six? One, two, three, four, five. And how many for number nine? One, two, three. So six it is. All right. Seventh column. Implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability and mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion versus number eight, which is to invest in technology, infrastructure and resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. How many for number seven? One, two, three, four, five. And how many for number eight? One, two, three. So seven it is. Implement resiliency measures to foster environmental sustainability and mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion versus number nine, which is to support an interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for number seven? One, two, three, four, five. And how many for number nine? One, two, three. Okay. So seven it is. And now we're down to our last one. And then after this one, we're going to take a little mini break and try to figure out the numbers. So the last one we're looking at are number eight, which is to invest in technology, infrastructure and resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance or to support an interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many for eight? One, two, three, four, five. And how many for number nine? One, two, three. All right. Number eight it is. So if you can give us a few seconds, maybe minutes, we'll calculate. And then what we're going to do, depending on how the level falls, we may or may not need the tiebreaker.
Counsel, counsel will take a brief five-minute recess.
That's all we got. Let's just make sure. One, two. Number one's, number two, that's fine. Okay. So that's good, two. Yeah. Number two has got one. That's what I got. Okay. Number three has got one, two, three, four. Four threes, right? Four threes and four ties. Four and four ties. And the four ties, okay.
Went a little bit longer than anticipated, but...
Technical difficulties.
So are we going to have to vote on the number three? Or where are we?
Sure. What I'm going to do is just iterate where you folks landed. And if you take a look at goals four and five, those are your tiebreaker. And they landed at four, five. So you can either have a runoff or just leave it that way. But your first one is to guide and promote best practices in planning land use and economic development. Second one is to implement resiliency measures to address environmental sustainability and mitigate the effects of climate change and coastal erosion. Third is to invest in technology, infrastructure and resources to ensure sustainable service delivery and facility maintenance. Goals four, five are tied with four votes and four ties. And that is to ensure an equitable and sustainable tax base that offers diverse residential and commercial properties. The four, five tied is support an interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. Sixth goal is to foster interdepartmental collaboration, enhance transparency and promote citizen engagement. Seven, enhance park infrastructure, community services and opportunities for recreation. Eight, enhance recruitment, retention and professional development strategies to maximize service delivery. Nine, evaluate city ordinances, policies and the charter and update or amend to reflect current and relevant standards. Are you surprised with the outcomes?
No. Are there any questions from counsel? Counsel, do we want to try and break the tie with the four, five?
Okay. So between four and five, ensuring an equitable and sustainable tax base that offers diverse residential and commercial opportunities versus the interconnected multimodal transportation system to accommodate community growth and meet service level expectations. How many want the first one? One, two, three, four, five? Five. And how many want the trail, the multimodal transportation? One, two. So goal number four is the equitable and sustainable tax base. And goal five is the interconnected multimodal transportation.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? Any comments? Is everybody happy with the process?
Yeah, that was going to be my comment.
Counsel Johnston, go ahead.
I enjoyed this process a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Much better than the Post-its.
Thank you, Counselor Minto.
Or the sticky notes.
Any further comments? Okay, so now that we've designed the goals, we're going to adopt these goals tonight. And that will be the motion. The motion is to adopt the goals one through nine as the council goals for the next term. Is there somebody willing to make the motion? Counselor Copeland.
All right, well, let's see. I don't have an agenda. Hold on a minute. Just gotta get the agenda up. It's written on there.
There's no one. There's no written motion.
Okay. I move that we accept the goals as presented on this goal sheet. Do you want me to read them all out?
You're making a motion to accept the goals that the council has voted on as the goals for the next term.
So moved.
Goals one through nine?
Yes.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Copeland, second by Counselor Minto on any discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote. Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Minto.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. These are the goals that will be refined as far as the... These will be the goals and the objectives underneath will be refined and brought to us in further meetings to put forward the strategies moving forward. With that, I just want to thank everyone involved in the process, everyone from the staff, everyone that participated in this process. I felt this was a great process in the EDC and going through it for the Economic Development Commission. And I'm happy that the council seems to be excited with the process as well. Moving on to item 11, administrative update. City Administrator Canrath, do you have an update?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just a few brief items. So the revised council rules and order of business is currently being redrafted to reflect the changes made at our last meeting. This will be posted on the website once complete. Eastern Trail, I had an opportunity this past week to meet with Carol Brush, Executive Director of the Eastern Trail Management District. She updated me on current efforts to connect the two off-road segments of trail running through Saco and Biddeford. Pan Am Railways, as you might know, the owner of the corridor has recently been contacted to gauge their interest in working with us, working with the Eastern Trail to acquire the remaining needed section. So it seems like there's potentially some progress there. I'm looking forward to working with her and the Eastern Trail to move this project forward. It would be a tremendous opportunity for our community. A reminder, Mary's walk is scheduled for March 22nd, and I'll be meeting with Mr. Libby to discuss details and logistics for that event sooner. And I imagine PD and Fire will be involved there also. Lastly, the Ecology School. I'd like to thank Executive Director Drew Dumps for hosting me at the Ecology School this past week to see their facility, the new building going on, and to learn more about their programs. So I appreciate him inviting me there. It looks like they have an exciting future ahead, and it's truly an asset for the community. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the city administrator? Seeing no questions. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any discussion on the right? Any comments on the right? Any comments on the left? Counselor Copeland.
I'm very pleased that the Ecology School reached out to you. And I would ask our school board members to consider asking Mr. Dumps to assist them in their facilities work. He has some really great ideas and think he could add some real value to that project and being in a sustaining vein. But the other thing I wanted to talk about also was we had a constituent email us about dog excrement on the beach. And I would really like to encourage everyone to clean up after your dogs. It's as simple as just bringing a bag, putting it, tying it around the handle of your leash, and bring it back out with you. It's really upsetting when little kids go out there with their parents or even adults walking on the beach. And you just look over there and you can see six little piles. There's no reason for that. It's unhealthy. And certainly, we're better than that. So I would strongly encourage people to clean up after your dogs. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. In the past, when new councils came on, we had had executive sessions to go over any pending legal matters. I'm just requesting that at a future meeting, we do that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's noted, and we'll put that on the agenda for February 3rd. Any further discussion? Further comments? Okay, moving on. There's no executive session tonight. That leads us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion second. And vote, all in favor?